Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the Abington Planning Board. So I'm calling this meeting to order. Mr. Shea, we got the minutes for 2:524 and 12:423.
We do.
Everybody had a chance to look at them?
Uh, yep.
When you're ready, if someone would, if there's any comments. Sir?
Minutes of December 4, 2023.
Mm-hmm.
Atkinson Planning Board held a meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Vice Chair Rick Shepherd was there.
Ah.
Clerk was absent. And as much as I aspire to the position of Vice Chair, there's just no fear.
So Jeff was absent and you were here.
Jeff was absent.
I can't be Vice Chair. Responsibility anymore.
The Vice Chair was absent, the Clerk was here.
Okay, thank you.
I saw a spelling, I think so. Hang on. Motion to approve the minutes with a change.
As amended?
Oh gee.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is both sets of minutes, I hear. Okay. Do you have any formates? No.
No. So that was for February 5?
Did we do them both?
Yes.
At once?
Yes.
I assume I can vote on the other one because I abstained from part of it?
Oh, sure.
Huh? I abstained from part of it?
But you can still vote on them, yeah.
I can still vote. I didn't know we were doing them together. Thank you.
Well, thank you for making that noticeable. Okay. Formates, no, the formates?
We did not receive any formates.
How about correspondence?
Uh, we don't really have any correspondence.
Okay. I know we've got the ZBA agenda here.
We do. I mean, we have correspondence, but it's related to...
Yeah, specific to the subdivision.
The plan for, yeah.
Anybody have any comments on the ZBA agenda?
I do.
Sir?
Uh, the first one listed, it looks like a new digital sign for Billy's Liquors.
Mm-hmm.
That one across from you.
Walmart.
Oh, God, lights.
Yeah.
Right opposite Walmart.
Um, and it looked for some waivers. I don't know if you know anything about what they're seeking the waivers from. I mean, I was on the committee to work with them, and B1 is, you know, how often the screens can change and they might have flashing and et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, considering past issues we've had with sign violations there, I'm very curious as to what they're questing, and I would certainly want to keep a tight leash on what we allow businesses to do with their signs, because I think once you allow one to do it, then you're gonna start seeing a whole lot of other groups. And I don't quite feel as strongly about, you know, making it look like, you know, Las Vegas Strip with blinking neon lights, but, um, you know, I would just be curious what they're looking to do.
All right. So you want me to send them a note on that?
I guess my only other comment would be all the other signs they have on the windows.
Yeah.
Maybe they will go away from place of, I don't know.
The rule is, um, signs can't cover more than 50% of your windows. And it can be, you know, per window, or it can be, if you have two windows, one of them is completely covered, but the other one's completely open, but it can't, it was that more than 50% can't be covered in signs. Trukies redid the whole way it does its window signs. Uh, I don't remember if this place has as well, but I'd just be curious as to what they're looking to do.
All right. I can, um, send that off to Marion, and she can pass it along to the zoning board of appeals. Before we finish with this, I just wanted to bring to you guys' attention the last one at 29 Adley Drive.
Yep.
Um, originally, there, um, Clark Brewer reached out to our office. This is an addition. I only have this one plan that got submitted to the zoning board of appeals. So this, in this line, this is a drain adjustment.
Oh, yeah.
So initially, when they came to, uh, they came up to the office, they wanted to go pass this point into the drain adjustment, and I reached out to town council, who said that probably would take an active town meeting to amend, um, the subdivision plan because the road has already been accepted. Um, so I just wanted you guys to know that they have resubmitted, and it's right on the, the line. Marion has asked that I send this to town council again as a follow-up, just to let her know that it literally is on the line, um, of the drain adjustment.
Uh, yeah, you'd actually, people need to put a diagram together with actual dimensions off of that, off of some point.
Right, to where the drain adjustment is.
Where it really is.
Yeah.
I mean, this is just on paper. So, yeah, if they do that...
Right, if, if...
There's no harm. It's actually, just screw them. If they had built that in there and someone complained about it, then that'd be...
Right.
...use their addition.
Right. So, yeah, no, they were aware of it. Um, that's, that's how they opted to go, but I want you guys to see that before I sent it off, even though it's a zoning board thing. It's a...
People are afraid of the zoning board.
Kind of an old planning board thing.
Not that bad. Something stupid.
Um, one other, just quick note, the 725 hearing, um, is a proposal to, I believe, demo and rebuild, demo a single-family, rebuild a duplex. Um, I just got the feeling, feeling we're going to start seeing a lot more of these, some of the smaller houses being demoed or replaced with two, three families, and I just didn't know if, I don't know if there's anything we want to do, but, you know, like, see, this is being a future trend in the next five to 10 years, so this would be a good time to think if there's anything we want to do to, regarding that. And the answer could be no, but...
Do you think that trend is, because I remember that when it was so cheap to buy someone's house and tear it down, but now the property is so up the wall.
That's why I think it's the duplex that's really gonna make it cost-effective.
Hmm, okay.
It, I guess, to buy something and then, and then ask for a marriage, you knew what it was when you bought it?
Yeah.
I guess they got a problem with that, but that's a zoning board's problem.
Yeah, I just noted that because it had come before the board earlier, kind of the next step, but I didn't have any comment on it.
Yeah, the 720 PM petition.
Oh, the 198?
Yeah.
Yeah, he told us they had to go to zoning, then come to planning, and then go back to zoning.
Yep.
Once it was approved.
They have a new secretary?
Yep.
They have a new secretary? Somebody, this is typed considerably different than the way we've ever done before.
Oh, what is it? Oh, is that the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, it actually says what it's about.
Yeah, so I, Nancy and Marion are sort of sharing responsibilities on the agendas and the minutes and stuff like that.
I thought it was a thing for zoning boards never to really give away what they're, what it's about. I just thought it was like, yeah, you know.
Yeah, no, I think she's trying to put as much information there as possible.
It looks great.
Yeah.
Come in, the person who did that, she did a fantastic job. Okay.
Not sure.
So anybody else got anything on the ZBA agenda? All right, let's move on to proposed zoning change hearing for Wednesday night format. Can you show the slideshow, other suggestions from the board?
So I just wanted to get some feedback from you guys on what you wanted to do. Kevin and I have already made copies of the zoning maps and copies of all the proposed zoning, including, Kevin did the FEMA floodplain map and with the zone, the, the language for the zoning on the map and then the actual map itself. So there'll be copies of that, copies of our regular zoning map and where the overlay district will be for MBTA. Um, and we have that slideshow. I didn't know if you wanted to do that, didn't want to do that.
I like the slideshow myself.
All right.
Yeah, I thought the slideshow would, uh, presented very well.
It's gonna be on TV, and I think that would be good. And it's gonna be a preview of what's gonna be seen at town meeting.
We're not doing that slideshow, no.
No?
Nope. Um, there's a lot going on at town meeting, so...
You see how that goes, so...
I would have it on hand, though, for that meeting.
Yeah, me too.
I will have it on hand. I will have the answers that are contained in there, kind of on hand, and Judy is supposed to be doing a Q and A for all her communities. I think she's gonna record several different ones, but then send them to us.
FAQ?
Um, yeah, maybe.
I mean, that would...
Be better than a Q and A, unless somebody was in the office asking her questions.
An FAQ would be a good idea.
She's gonna record it and send it to us, which I will get to cable and have that start running.
Yep.
We cannot have her, I've already had this conversation with the moderator, I wanted to know if we could have that run, um, her little brief FAQ before, at town meeting, and he declined, for very valid reasons, I completely understood, but...
It's too bad.
Yep.
Could go either way at town meeting, you know, that possible.
Right.
You know, people, people, you try to inform everybody and...
Right.
It's hard. And then they want to hash it at town meeting, which is even harder.
Right.
You know, I'm just thinking about what, you know, Rick Collins has said about us being proactive, and, you know, and the number that struck me was the pretty, you know, we're pretty much at 10% affordable, but also the split between the single-family houses and the multiple-family houses, and the fact that we've done toward, and the fact that this isn't requiring us to build houses, it's just requiring us to plan for it.
It's requiring us to create a district.
Right. And I think that Abington has been pretty proactive. I think, you know, we've had the opportunity to explain this and things like that.
Yep.
And we'll have the hearing on Wednesday night, and I thought that Rick and you and Judy and Sean did a terrific job...
Thank you.
On that program. Have you guys seen the program?
Mm-hmm. Very good.
Yeah, I was, I was allowed to sit in on the, the doing of it.
The dark shadow at the back of the studio.
Oh, they kept you off camera?
Yeah, yeah.
Good move.
I have a face for radio, so...
My, my suggestion remains, anybody on this board who gets asked about it over the next month is, I have no problem fighting like hell, like, to make changes to it, but I really think we need to remain in compliance in the meantime. So you can do both things, remain in compliance, adopt a zoning district, and then feel free to join with all the other towns and fight for changes.
Who in this town would fight that, fight that, I mean, this, that seems like a pretty laid-back town.
We don't know.
We don't know.
So just in case, huh?
I mean, case in point, Milton adopted it at their town meeting, and then a referendum arose after that, and they have since, for lack of a better term, recalled it.
Mm-hmm.
So...
What struck me is...
I believe you've seen what the reaction of the Commonwealth has been. Yeah. Just, you know, that's a, that's a serious road to go down.
But we also have 100 communities gonna be voting on this between now and June 1st, so it's gonna be interesting.
It just struck me that a couple of members of the planning board helped lead the insurrection for...
Oh, in Milton, yeah.
In Milton, and hopefully none of you guys would do that, but...
Yeah. I hope everybody's on the party train.
I'm all about peace and love, man.
There you go.
That's good to know. Um, so, we're making great progress.
We are, we are. So, um, all right, so we'll have the slide deck ready, and we've made those copies. Anything else anybody can think of that we should have ready to go?
We could get it back to you.
All right, you can let me know.
What time Wednesday?
The next hearing is 6:20, but I don't see anybody in front of us.
No, let me, um, go see if there's anybody else in the hallway.
Um...
Do you want me to pass this down and then what that ended up here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate to talk about a possible lookbook?
Well, let's wait till Liz comes back in.
You're here.
All right. Liz, Rick was bringing up something, Rick Collins was bringing up something. Want to go again, Rick, please?
Just, can we talk about a possible lookbook for like 30 seconds? I just didn't know if it's a, not, are we able to talk about, all I wanted to say was like, I'm willing to like go take photos if people want to send sites that they like, but...
That would be great.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
I did take some pictures, I drove around when I was doing the comparisons. Oh, could you bring that over here so they can see the camera? Can you bring the, yeah, the tripod over here?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Um, so I have like the gables, not the gables, um, yes.
You had a number of pictures.
I had a bunch of pictures for the density, so I can, I'm happy to share those with you, and, um, if anybody else has any ideas of sites around town that they like, even smaller ones.
Yeah.
So this is basically if a developer comes in, we want to be able to say like, these are good examples of the type of...
This is what we're looking to do, and we can wrap that into our design guidelines.
Yeah.
Which I think we're gonna start working on right after, um, right after the town meeting, like, maybe starting in June.
We had talked about that, about the...
Yeah, when things slow down a little.
Wisdom of putting together design guidelines.
Yeah.
So we have to do that.
Right, and then, um, you guys can look at adopting them in the fall.
Yeah. I've seen city diagrams like that, that those are, those are great, explaining exactly the styles.
Right.
So Union Point, they had a great little lookbook section of their presentation.
With some great, like, little cottage looks in there and stuff, yeah.
So I would, I'm willing to go take photos if people want to shoot addresses.
All right. I'll see what I had left from that density stuff, because there were some nice two, three family, um, New England architectural style.
There's a couple in town, I'm like, I would love to have more of that.
Right, right. Um, so I think you need to wait three minutes and read a hearing notice.
Okay.
Sorry, gonna give us three minutes to read the hearing notice.
And Dave is not joining us tonight.
Dave is not joining us tonight, he is out of...
Is he still skiing?
He's, he's out of the, out of country now, he's, um, out of the state.
I know that they were on a skiing vacation.
Oh, good for them, I think based on...
Kevin, I'm sorry, I interrupted, I'm...
That's okay.
Uh, do we actually have like physical copies of the new floodplain maps?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Yeah?
Yes.
Chance we have them on tonight, or to get those Wednesday?
No, they're huge, and I'll bring them Wednesday, but they have to go back to the town clerk's office as part of, uh, if you come in to look at them.
Okay.
But my plan was to grab them Wednesday.
I apologize for interrupting those.
That's okay, we got the, um, the flood insurance is like this huge, and then they printed out the, the flood maps with it, it's, I was just grateful to have it all before waste. Do you have the hearing notice?
Yes, I do, I do. I came prepared for this meeting.
I'm telling you, and I'm no idea, look at me, look at me, look at this, I look at all this guy.
I'm the chair, I'm supposed to be prepared.
All right, so that, you can read out, uh, the, 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 so, I won't bring that up.
Give it a couple more minutes.
All right.
We're just waiting for the 6:20 time for you guys to...
Just right to midnight.
Yeah. Now, that was an excellent suggestion, Rick, give more pictures of what we're desiring for for the zoning, by the way.
Yeah, I think it's really helpful for future discussions.
Particularly developers coming to the town, interested.
Well, I think it came up in the cable TV, or the, uh, TV presentation, um, that some of the pictures that you had put together, the list of, um, different places around town, including, uh, some of the multifamily, um, structures that would not be allowed.
Right.
As I recall, Attorney Riley...
That built was actually double.
Yeah, Attorney Riley had made that point, that, uh, you know, the picture that we're looking at here is an example of what would not be allowed.
Right.
And I, and I think that's kind of an important point, um, that the picture would help to illustrate...
Yeah, I mean, I think if you can tell people that it's, um, the density is half of what the woodlands is.
And half of...
That that's a...
As an example, I think that's, that'd be really helpful.
And half of, is it high point?
Yeah, half of, uh, yeah.
Avalon, whatever it was, I think it's high, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because I think it's pretty normal for a lot of people, that's immediately where they go, that we're going to see more woodlands, we're gonna see more, you know, multifamily dwellings like that.
Right, okay. All right, guys, it's 6:20, I'll read the meeting notes.
All right.
Okay, public hearing notice. The Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 4th, 2024, at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way, at 6:20 PM, on a definitive subdivision plan application to construct four lots entitled 44 and 54 Linwood Street, Abington, Mass, Winterfox Estate Subdivision, prepared for Winterfox LLC, 142 Fisher Street, Westborough, Mass, by MP Design Consultants, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 200, Southborough, Mass. Plan is dated February 9th, 2024. The property is owned by Winterfox LLC, 144, 142 Fisher Street, Westborough, Mass. The property is located on Assistant Map, 7 Lots 9 and 11 in Abington. The hearing will be held at Abington Public Town Hall, Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way, plans may be viewed at the office for town clerk at the Abington Town Hall, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday, 8:30 AM to 12:15 PM, Friday, excuse me, Friday, 8:30 AM to 12:15 PM. Who says chairman, Monday, February 19th, 2024, February 26th, 2024. Um, oh, before we get started too, I'd like to read a, a comment from the ZBA to, from John Stone, um, the director of the Abington Public Works. Mr. Hughes, the Abington Sewer Department has reviewed your request for information regarding the planning board hearing scheduled March 4th, 2024, and has the following comments. 44 and 54 Linwood Street, this proposal located on Assistant Plan 7 Lot 11 and 9 must be approved by the Board of Sewer Commissioners at a regularly scheduled meeting. So now I will invite folks to come up, if you could identify yourselves.
Um, before we move any further, do you guys have the evidence from the newspaper that you...
We didn't receive that.
You didn't?
No.
They didn't send you a notarized statement?
No. We did not.
We have a quandary.
We have a quandary? Because I don't, I don't know that it got advertised in the newspaper.
We have the newspaper that wasn't advertised on?
No.
Ma'am, does you, how did you hear about it?
I got the hearing notice. It's exciting that the meeting happened. And I live at 55 Linwood Street, and this is the first that I'm hearing about.
Yeah, this is the first hearing we're having, yeah.
But this didn't get posted, so that's kind of a non-issue. Can we just do an informal presentation and then...
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, that was...
Honestly, it kind of comes down to that very last sentence, though, got a piece of property that's too small.
Oh, from Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, right now, this is actually just a, um, an administrative thing, but I'm not sure you guys can hear it.
We can't, we can't do a public hearing.
Can't do a public hearing.
We can't do a public hearing unless it was advertised.
Unless we have evidence that it's been advertised.
Right, and you don't have that, right? You got nothing? I can't believe you didn't get anything back from the newspaper.
What, um, yeah, I just thought we sent you, was that 142 Fisher? Or was it just...
No, I emailed you the hearing notice, and you guys needed to send that to the enterprise. Did somebody send it to the enterprise so it would get, it would get printed in the newspaper?
No, no.
No, I emailed it to Zoe.
Yes. So we were the ones supposed to be...
You guys needed to send it to the newspaper and pay for it to be advertised, so I'm guessing what you're telling me is that didn't happen.
I don't think that happened, yes, but I've stopped Zoe.
Well, I think we're gonna have to reschedule this.
Absolutely, you guys can't, but I mean, if you want to do it informally, because we now have people here...
Um, sure.
Well...
It's up, it's up to you, Rick. I don't want you to be uncomfortable about it.
Point of order, I mean, just, we, we, we've established that we cannot have a public hearing.
You cannot have a public hearing, because the advertising requirements were not...
If we do something that looks and feels like a public hearing, a presentation, questions, feedback, and all of that, then haven't we conducted de facto a public hearing?
I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we need to be really cautious here on how we proceed with this.
That we don't?
Yeah.
And they start all over again.
Yeah.
Do I have to re, I don't know, am I reading this wrong? I mean, is there any purpose for them going forward? Yes. Why?
It wasn't advertised.
No, I'm just saying they...
Oh, you're saying based on the, based on the letter you got from Dave?
Yeah, it's not going forward. To go through all of the things that Dave had, um...
Well, no, it comes down to the best thing.
No, but Jeff is saying based on the letter.
The site's not big enough. They'd have to go to zoning or something to get approval to have a smaller lot.
One of the lots is...
No, it's, it's supposed to need 30,000 square feet, they only got 22 or something like that.
That was up once, but, yeah, we...
So you guys received the letter from our engineer?
This is what we're kind of getting into.
Yes, you guys received the letter.
Oh, it doesn't matter that they got the advertisers notice, I sent those out. It absolutely needed to be in the newspaper.
In the newspaper, yes.
Yep.
I believe Zoe mentioned for the town board to care about...
No, I emailed, I email, I can go pull email for you. I emailed it to Zoe, explained to her what dates it needed to be advertised, and that you guys are responsible for payment.
We do.
Yeah, we do not do that at all.
Okay, that is not a good...
Okay, so you guys cannot move forward tonight because there's no public hearing, but I wanted to know if I sent Zoe the, um, letter from our engineer? Know what engineering, did you guys get a copy of that?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Okay, so you, so you know the plan is not ready for action?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, just wanted to get some of the board field, but I guess we can't do that.
You can't do that.
I, I suggest that you, we, you know, move this to next month, or whenever you could give it back.
Well, can you get revised plans done?
Can you get a revised plan?
Yes.
By this Friday?
By this upcoming week?
Yeah.
On the 8th?
The 8th, I think the 8th is the filing date.
I think so.
For...
Yes, we'll, we'll do our best to do that, yes.
April. Okay. Because again, you'll have to, you're gonna have to give me postage and letters.
Yeah. Do we need to print all sets again?
You're doing almost a revised plan, right? It's a lot of stuff that needs to get fixed in it, right?
If, yeah, the changes that Dave, some of the, many of the changes that Dave has recommended have to be redrawn, then it's a new plan.
Right.
Yes, I'm just wondering how many copies is this?
So the same?
All set.
The same. I think, Mr. Chairman, once you were adjourned meeting, there are a couple of people here that might want to look at the plan, because they have not been to the office to see it, and while we're here, I'd be happy to let them see the plan.
Yeah.
So we're gonna motion for the next meeting? Is that what we're at?
The only problem is your next meeting, um, is April 1st at the high school.
No, I'd suggest that it be at the May meeting.
The May meeting.
It gives these folks extra time to make sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Oh, we, we already went through some of the, a lot of the comments, and most of them have been addressed, and everybody spoke to David Johnson over the phone, um, we've already that most of our, um, most of the things related to Storm Marter and some of the other comments that he made can be addressed by next Friday.
By this Friday?
Yeah, by this, by this Friday, I'm sorry, by March 8.
Like three days?
Yes, by March 8, yes.
Yep. The only problem is their next meeting is the meeting before town meeting, so it's a short meeting.
It's a very short meeting.
They have to meet before we go to town meeting.
Okay.
Um, so it's not really fair to the people who are here tonight that wanted to talk about this tonight, and they can't because it didn't get advertised, that their time would be mitigated because the board has to get to town meeting.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
What if we talk to them until March 8, separate from this follow-up hearing?
Well, I, I don't know what their questions are, right?
Yeah, well, let's say we can address some of their other concerns.
Are you guys comfortable with that, or do you want to deal with the board?
They can be on the media and make sure that everything is addressed appropriately.
So, to the two people in the room, are you guys comfortable with that, or do you want to have it done with the board?
I think it's done with the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I really think we should do this in May.
Yeah.
That way you'll be before the full board, well, you'll be before the full board in April, but... but we give the, the abutters time to, you know, see the plans and make their comments and stuff like that. And actually, I, I really believe you need more time than to have it done by this Friday.
But can we still submit by this Friday to get a sense of the board?
Okay, well, I think I just explained to you, their April meeting is at the high school, and then they have to go to town meeting, we all have to be at town meeting. So, the meeting is about 30 minutes that night.
So we're gonna go May?
Yeah, the first Monday in May, and the schedule's on.
I think what you meant is that, so you submit the plans, so the internal review can reshoot that, so if there's any additional comments from the plans.
You can, you can get the, you can bring the plans back anytime before the filing deadline in May, so that would be the first week of April, the second Friday in April, somewhere in there, I don't know, the date is off the top of my head, absolutely. You can get the plans back to me this Friday, next Friday, whenever, up until that deadline in April, and I will happily send them along today.
Got it.
All right? And then you guys can work that out before we get to the May meeting, and that might be for everybody's benefit, right? You'll have a little bit of time to work it back up.
If the plans were resubmitted, then that would give the board the opportunity to see Nord's engineering's feedback.
Yes.
For the revised plans.
Yep.
Which is kind of, that would be helpful, that's what we need to see.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it would be in your best interest to come and say something.
Yep, and then May provides everybody with ample opportunity to get their questions answered.
Will we get a new letter in the mail?
Uh, yes, they're gonna have to re, they're gonna have to, you're gonna have to give me.
Yeah, the new.
New envelopes and postage so I can re-notify the neighbors.
We gave you two sets, so you need another two.
No, if you gave me two sets, that should be fine.
Okay, so you're.
And it's after January 1st, those envelopes are firm, right?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause the abutters list changes in January.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure I get the same set.
Okay.
Capturing the same group.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll do one more set, at least you have two again.
For the sake of this conversation, sir, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm Mark Allen Park, I'm the president of MP Design Consultants, and I represent the Civil Department of the Department of Carlos Burra.
We just have to have the names for the.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
This is good in a way, because at least now you know for sure that this will be advertised. I'm sorry it's gonna be delayed.
Yeah, not yet.
Couple months, but you know, it has to be advertised and.
Yes.
Get the ads and papers and stuff like that. It'll give the neighbors a chance to see the plans better, too.
So was there another email I should be sending?
Yeah, could you? Um, I don't have any business cards, but I can write down.
So I had that one and it kept bouncing back.
Yeah, that one, um, I think I updated and I sent you a new one.
Yep.
I think this, oh, I think this one.
It appears on the Secretary of State's site.
This is right.
All right.
Okay, just make it administrative, brass it administrative.
That's correct, okay.
But I can confirm.
I mean, that's the way it came into us.
Mm-hmm.
I just want some clarification on that.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Whatever, I'll just, yeah, some of the scene earlier.
Okay.
Can I add my email as well?
Sure. Who should I be sending it, so apparently this is part of our problem is a single point of contact, so you tell me who you want me to send the stuff to, and that's where I'll send it?
Send it to me.
Okay.
And when you get done, Rick's, Rick Shepard has a comment he'd like to make. Next time, bring this.
Yes. I went out of one.
Okay, great.
Rick, did you have something? The gentleman's right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is just an administrative issue, so I noticed on the stormwater, stormwater management permit, the exemption form, that the address provided for Winterfox Limited Water Authority Corporation was an address in Westborough.
Mm-hmm.
The Secretary of State's site lists a Temple Street address in Woodman and across my circle, address in Abington, not this one.
Okay.
Under the listing for the LLC.
681, perfect.
Yeah, so.
So if you can get an amended application back for that?
Yeah.
And make sure. Make sure it's on all the documentation. Thank you very much. I'll be back Tuesday next week, is that okay?
Yep.
On Wednesday?
Yep.
In two days.
Two days, I'll have it right back to you, two weeks.
Thank you.
All right, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Did the, did we officially open a public hearing?
Yes, you read that, oh, sorry, um, yeah, you can close it. Because we're gonna have to do a level due to an administrative error.
Okay, so we need a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.